Well, good evening everyone and welcome to the June 10th, 2025 Regular Session Meeting of City Council. If you are here tonight and would like to speak to council, please talk to staff in the lobby. Please indicate item I for matters that are germane to City Council. We have a three-minute light system. After stating your name and address, you will see a green light. After two minutes, you'll see a yellow light. After three minutes, you will see a red light and a beep. At that time, please take your seat. Written remarks may be handed to the city clerk to be made a part of the record. At this time, please silence your phones. And prior to beginning the business portion of this meeting, Pastor Riley Holiday with Manor Church will provide invocation to the council. Afterwards, Councilman Coleman will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. It is our practice to stand for the invocation and pledge. Those who also wish to stand are welcome, but under no obligation to do so. Thank you.
Council members, thank you for this opportunity. Let's pray. Gracious and eternal Father, we just welcome your presence. We're asking you for your anointing, which is simply the present presence of God in this space. And think of King Solomon when he's given the task of leading your people. He didn't ask for power, he didn't ask for money, he asked for the wisdom. And so God, I just want to speak that over the leadership. We thank you for the leaders that you've gifted us. And give them a special grace. Give them wisdom to lead us into unity, as council member, our vice mayor would say, with two N's in unity. Thank you for just the synergy we have, for the alignment, and for the great plans that you have for the City of Newport News. We love you, and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May I have a motion to excuse Councilman Ely from this meeting?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. At this time, please call the roll.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carried, six-zero.
Thank you. And prior to continuing the agenda, I'm seeking a motion to amend the agenda by deleting item H3. H3 was included in the agenda in error, and we brought forth at a later time.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carried, six-zero.
Thank you. Public hearing, page four, item E1, requested up an ordinance amending ordinance number 7910-TAC-23 to grant a 12-month extension of conditional use permit number Charlie Uniform-TAC-2023-TAC-0005 to CNU, 12396 Warwick LLC and Griffith Associates to construct an automobile gasoline supply station on property located at 12396 and 12394 Warwick Boulevard. At this time, are there any speakers?
Yes, sir.
I see we have questions only, and then we have four speakers. I will go to the speakers first. Anthony Starkey?
Um, they're first.
Okay, no worries. Linda Kenwood?
Yes, sir.
Michael Simaru?
Yes.
And Marie Collins?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we're gonna go ahead. I think we're good on E1 then. Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. At this time, is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carried, six-zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carried, six-zero.
Thank you. And can I have staff go to the four members, so that way we could identify which one they want to speak on? I would appreciate it. Page 18, item E2 is a request to adopt an ordinance granting conditional use permit number Charlie Uniform-TAC-2025-TAC-0002 to RM Wheelin Properties LLC and Bay Custom Auto to allow for the construction and operation of a body paint shop on 1.92 acre parcel located at 11408 Jefferson Avenue, Zone C2, General Commercial. At this time, are there any speakers?
Yes, sir.
I see only one. Mr. Tim Trant?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Vice Mayor, members of council. It's my privilege to be here tonight. I'll be brief on behalf of Bay Custom Auto. Just a special situation. I thought you all would like to celebrate as you act on this CUP. With me tonight is Mr. Mike Whalen, one of the co-owners. He owns Bay Custom Auto with his brother Bobby, who couldn't be here this evening. Our engineer Dexter Williams, and last but not least, my colleague Ahmed Khalil in 11815 Fountain Way here in the City of Newport News. Real quick, the Whalens are very excited to be expanding their business to this location. They've been in business for 40 years. They have two locations already in the city. This will be their third. They're excited to make this investment in a brand-new building and revitalize this site. We're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. At this time, are there any questions from City Council? I think we're good, Tim. Thank you. Motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carried, six-zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carried, seven-zero.
Thank you. Item E3 is a request to adopt an ordinance granting conditional use permit number Charlie Uniform-2025-0003 to Ferguson Enterprise and Costco Warehouse Corporation to allow for the construction and operation of a gasoline supply station for a 20.23 acre portion of property located at 12500, 12490, and 12470 Jefferson Avenue, Zone M1 Light Industrial. At this time, are there any speakers?
One, sir. Mrs. Lindsey Carney.
Okay. As Ms. Lindsey Carney comes up, Vice Mayor, do something to read?
I'll read it afterwards.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna sign the vote.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Lindsey Carney. My office address is 12350 Jefferson Avenue here in Newport News. I'm really just here to answer any questions that you all may have. Costco is extremely excited to move to this new location. It's gonna produce additional parking, additional warehouse space, and offer a lot more services to our citizens. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I think we're good.
Thank you.
Request for the floor. Sorry, Lindsey. Real quick, the community is very curious, and if you don't know the answer, it's fine. The current Costco location, do they have someone potentially that's going to go into that space? If you could answer that for the community, that'd be awesome.
Sure. No, great question. The current space is not owned by Costco. They are a tenant in that center, so it's not entirely in their control what's going to backfill that. But we are told by the landlord that they have some really interesting national prospects of the quality of Costco that could backfill the space.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Abstain. I'm going to abstain due to a personal interest in the transaction, as I am an employee of Ferguson Enterprises. My signed written declaration is on file with the clerk.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carried, five with one abstention.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Just want to say thank you. I know a lot of hard work went into this with the EDA and other members, zoning, planning, everyone that's involved. So they win for the city. Appreciate everyone. At this time, call the roll.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Abstain.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carried, five with one abstention.
Thank you. Item E4 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to make offers to acquire by voluntary sale or condemnation portions of property located at 1014 Jefferson Avenue in support of the Toys Neighbor Initiative Ivy Avenue Road project. At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carried, six-zero.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the ordinance.
Move it ups.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carried, six-zero.
Thank you. Item E5 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to make offers to acquire by voluntary sale or condemnation temporary and permanent easements for the Warwick Boulevard and Yorktown Road intersection improvement projects. At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carried, six-zero.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carried, six-zero.
Thank you. Item F contains the following items: Page 173, minutes of the work session of May 13th; Page 189, minutes of the regular meeting of May 13th; and Page 223, ordinance setting the number of days sufficient for completion of the September through November term of service of the Board Review of Real Estate Assessments. Motion to approve the consent agenda, item F1 through F3, all-inclusive.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carried, six-zero.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, other City Council actions. Page 25, item G1, Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Item G1 is a request to adopt an ordinance amending City Code Chapter 40, including Section 40-7.07, which updates the City Code to align with changes to Virginia law by recognizing deaths by suicide as qualifying line of duty, deaths for tax exemption purposes for surviving spouses. This change takes effect July 1. And Section 40-138 updates transient occupant tax collection rules to ensure consistency with state requirements. I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
Yes, sir.
Are these speakers for this one, or are they for a different item?
No, the question is...
Sorry, can you just go to the mic? Don't worry, it's not gonna count against you. Just the computer's messing up, and so I don't know where you wanna...
We're here to speak around short-term rentals.
Okay, so that'll be for citizen comments at the end?
Okay.
Yeah, no worries.
All right, thank you.
Okay. So I'll be... There's no speakers on G1, so I'll just go straight to motions of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carried, six-zero.
Thank you. Page 231, item G2, Mr. Manager.
Item G2 is a request to approve a resolution granting permission to use the city's rights-of-way for telecommunications purposes and authorizes a temporary, non-exclusive, revocable license agreement with Level 3 Communications of Virginia, Inc. The existing agreement approved in 2020 expires August 31, 2025. Level 3 Communications requested a five-year renewal from September 1, 2025 through August 31, 2030. The terms remain consistent with the previous agreement. I recommend approval.
Thank you. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carried, six-zero.
Thank you. Page 252, item G3, Mr. Manager.
Item G3, the first of two items, is a request to approve a resolution authorizing a city manager to execute all necessary documents for a standard project administration agreement between the City of Newport News and the Virginia Department of Transportation for two Hampton Roads Transportation Accountability Commission-funded projects. The city has secured funding for two construction-phase traffic management plan projects supporting the Hampton Roads Express Lanes Network. The first project involves developing portable CCTV camera and changeable message signs in areas lacking intelligent transportation systems devices. The second project upgrades detection at intersections along key routes. I recommend approval.
At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carried, six-zero.
Page 266, item G4, Mr. Manager.
Item G4 is the second of two items. It is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $760,000 in fiscal year 2025 Hampton Roads Transportation Accountability Commission funds for two construction-phase traffic management plan projects that support the Hampton Roads Express Lanes Network. The first project includes $52,500 for portable CCTV cameras and changeable message signs. The second includes $7,500 to upgrade vehicle detection at signalized intersections along corridors near Hampton Roads Express Lanes Network construction zones. I recommend approval.
At this time, I see we have no speakers. Motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carried, six-zero.
Thank you. Appropriations, page 270, appropriations, item H, Mr. Manager.
There are two appropriations this evening. Item H1 is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $2,263,462 in fiscal year 2025 Virginia Department of Transportation Highway Safety Improvement Program grant funds for three projects aimed at improving intersection safety. The first is new masked-arm signals, visibility, and ADA improvements at the intersection of Warwick Boulevard and Harpersville Road. The second is new traffic signals and left-turn lanes at Rock Landing Drive and Omni Boulevard. And the third is adding sidewalks on Jefferson Avenue from Industrial Park Drive to Shields Road. Item H2 is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $2,395,752 in fiscal year 2025 Virginia Department of Transportation Revenue Sharing Grant Funds, along with an equal amount of local matching funds for a total appropriation of $4,791,504 to support six projects. The first is Sixth Street Phase 2, which is Marshall Avenue to Walnut Avenue. The second is traffic signal masked-arm conversion at two intersections, Brook Street at Jefferson Avenue and Crittenton Middle School at Jefferson Avenue. The third is Nettles Drive Sidewalk and ADA ramps. The fourth is River Road, River Park Drive Sidewalk and Mercury Boulevard intersection improvements. The fifth is Warwick Boulevard reconstruction. And the sixth is Huntington, Washington, and West Avenues pedestrian improvements. I recommend approval of all the appropriations.
At this time, there are no speakers. Motion to approve item H1 and H2?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carried, six-zero.
Thank you. Now we're up to item I, citizen comments on matters germane to council. I will call each name in the order that appears in front of me. Anthony Starkey, and then Linda Kenwood.
Good evening, Councilman.
Good evening.
Ladies, our concern as the residents of the Mary Point neighborhood is that there is a concern that short-term rental properties which violate the terms that they're supposed to operate under seem to be going unsupervised. There is consistent violations and consistent reports of violations, but no action seems to be being taken against the property owner. And our neighborhood is a little concerned about that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I'll address short-term rentals at the end, but I'll let everyone have their time. Thank you, sir. Ms. Linda Kenwood, and then Mendel Service, and then Michael Simaru.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Linda Kenwood, and I'm a homeowner in Mary Point. And just as Anthony stated, we, the homeowners, have become increasingly concerned about short-term rentals. Actually, we didn't even know that they existed in our neighborhood until we had a serious incident that occurred within the past year. We're, of course, I'm sure you're well aware, there was a shooting, where thankfully, nobody was killed that could easily have occurred. So my concern is, when short-term rentals were approved by the city over the last several years, there were guidelines that were put into place. Now, me as a homeowner, I truly have to say I was unaware that that was permissible within the City of Newport News. I feel that the communications around that, in my opinion, were lacking. And my request now is, is that we now have a situation where we know that we have short-term rentals throughout the city, and there's the good and the bad and the ugly that goes along with short-term rentals. My request to the city is, is that you do have some very strict guidelines that you expect to have in place. However, I don't believe that there is a good process to ensure that there is compliance to those guidelines. And I see that as a city responsibility. So as a homeowner, I'm asking that the city revisit the short-term rental guidelines. We need to be assured that there's a good process in place to ensure that people are compliant with applying for the proper pieces of work that are necessary to ensure that we can monitor these things. I think the city also has a duty to continue to monitor the compliance of these rentals and to determine whether there truly are issues. Because at some point, if we track and trend how this is playing out, we may determine as a city that maybe this is not really benefiting the city as a whole. I don't know the answer to that, but I do believe that that's a duty that I expect from all of you as part of our leaders of this city. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, ma'am. And before Ms. Mendel Service comes up, just one comment on that. So 100% we hear you about the short-term rentals, so we'll take the blame for the lack of communication. So we're going to publish something tomorrow in Newport News Now about the plan going forward. So I'm going to summarize the plan, and then we'll have a video that comes out on Friday. But what we're going to do when we pass this, and I wasn't on council, but we passed it two years ago, the plan was really not to enforce it. We are now going to enforce it, and so individuals are going to have until August 1 to get into compliance. There's a whole website that you can check out. It's all gonna be published tomorrow. But I can promise you that we're going to enforce the ordinance. That being said, City Council is going on a retreat locally in a few weeks. That is going to be a topic of discussion of, should we strengthen it, should we weaken it, probably more on the strengthen category. But we hear you loud and clear. We're going to have better communications going forward, and you should get something in your email by Thursday or Friday at the latest. So we 100% hear you. Ms. Mendel Service?
I know you're stoked out.
Take your time.
Thank you.
I'll be here all night. No, there's no worries. And then after, Ms. Mendel's gonna be Michael Simaru, Marie Collins, and then Jamie Starkey.
Hello. I was here last month talking about the homelessness situation. And afterwards, the response was, do you know about Four Oaks? And the other response, when I was speaking to Ms. Vick afterwards, was, you know, after the meetings, her response was that when she goes there, there's people not doing anything, not moving. The same people are gathered there. And I keep trying to explain, homeless people are invisible. The ones you see are not representing the majority of us. For example, last week, Friday, I got a notice from my management that they had not been paid through Section 8, and they were going to start eviction procedures. And immediately, I thought to myself, okay, what can I do? And my first thought was, well, you were raised in the church, and it's time to go to heaven, so let's just commit suicide. Because I said to myself, last time I was unable to have a place to live, at least I had a vehicle that I could drive around in and park at Walmart. But now there's not even any shelters for the winter, and with all my health issues, my biggest fear was, what about the rats? Where am I gonna go? Where am I gonna sleep? I don't have a sleeping bag. I don't have a family. I don't have neighbors. I don't have a community. Every single month, I work... Every single month, I worry about, do I pay my utilities bill or pay groceries? And when I buy groceries, I feel guilty. So when I spoke to Mr. Mayor, Mr. Jones afterwards, and I know he was tired because his eyes were red and a little bit smaller than usual. And I said, it seems like I voted for people I hoped would do something and that you don't care. And his immediate response, because he was tired, was, yes, we do care. My mother taught me as a preacher, love is a verb. Not what you say you're going to do, not what you say you feel, but what you do. And as a person that rides the buses, I remember several years ago when Ms. Vic was excited about taking bus rides. Well, if you get on a bus and you miss your stop, sometimes there's thirty blocks between bus stops. So for me, this is not a romantic experience. Fortunately, I found out by going down to the housing office yesterday and this morning before going to physical therapy. The snafu was, I bought my maiden name back. I filled out the paperwork. It didn't get into the system, so it started a dominoes effect. But I thought of the dark place I went into and feeling like I come here and I speak up, but I'm not involved in helping the change even though I have brilliant ideas. And I talked to the Director of Human Services, who also has brilliant ideas, and the libraries. And I try to get things moving. So I'm just asking you to do a little bit more triage. Instead of doing studies, take that money and pay somebody's first and last in deposit. Thank you very much. I'm going to the bathroom as usual.
Thank, thank you, ma'am. Michael Simaru, Marley Collins, and then Jamie Starkey, in that order. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, sir.
My counsel, Michael Simaru, who live in nineteen Langhorne Road, Newport News. I'm here to speak about the same thing they did, short-term rentals in our area, specifically the house at One Langhorne. The first question I'd like to pose to everyone would be, when was the last time there was a gang-related shooting within a hundred yards of your house? That's happened to us as we live there. The owner of that specific house has repeated violations of the occupancy rules. There's ten, twelve cars there at the residence, which is listed as four bedrooms. And you should know that that dictates that there shouldn't be any more than eight people there. The other thing is, we were concerned about it and they, we were told that the owner of the home addressed the fact that the home was available as a short-term rental and it was removed as a short-term rental. And when you search websites, when you do a Google search for One Langhorne being a rental property, it actually only comes up listed as a yearly rental. So we assumed that everything was being taken care of and the owner was addressing it properly. But a little, a little digging informed me that the owner of the property refers to the property as the Beehive. And the Beehive is listed on Airbnb, Bespoke, Cassi, Skyscanner, Hotels One, and several other sites as a short-term rental. So even though he was told that you can't do that, they've backdoored, he's backdoored the way into getting it listed because since we were told that it was no longer a short-term rental, there's been several occasions where it obviously has been. So we just want to make sure that you continue to address that and hear what's going on with this person at that specific address. So thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. And actually, I want to give a moment to the city, to central city council members. Do you want to say anything? I'll let Councilman Coleman and then Councilman Long speak on it, if you want to.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I definitely hear your concerns and Councilman Long and I have discussed this at length already. And we're looking forward to moving, moving the needle on number one enforcement of our current regulations when it comes to short-term rentals, but also possibly maybe some amendments or changes to the current ordinance. Because at the end of the day, I think each and every one of you purchased your homes in your neighborhoods anticipating that you would be in a nice, safe environment where you can raise your families and you might not have anticipated maybe fifteen, twenty years ago that there would be a, you know, a short-term rental next door to you or at the end of your street. So we want to respect everyone that's involved in this. We want to respect the, you know, the folks that live in the neighborhoods, but also the, you know, the individuals who are doing the short-term rentals the right way. And unfortunately, what happens in many cases is the, the ones that are not doing it correctly are the ones that make the most, get the most attention and also put a bad light on everyone. But we are, we are prepared as a council to make sure that it's enforced. And number two, make sure the regulations are where they need to be.
Thank you. Councilman Long?
Yes, Councilman Coleman couldn't say it better. We want to make sure the neighbors, residents in our community, actually are protected by our city, City Council, and making sure short-term rentals aren't presenting a harm to our neighborhoods. We already have a crisis as it is with affordable housing. When short-term rentals take those, those paces, it does present a harm to the rest of the community. I will say, as you're doing your homework with the, the websites that the Airbnb or Verbo is being shown at, let the city know. So the more that we have an understanding of where he's actually hosting his home at, we can go after those, I guess, complaints and we can kind of pile up those complaints against the short-term rental. And like Coleman said, the ones that are doing the right, keep on doing, doing the right way, come to the city and getting a permit. But the ones that are not, not abiding by our ordinance, we do want to see you come forward and get in compliance. And I guess it'll be more conversation we'll have at the retreat.
Thank you, gentlemen. Ms. Marley Collins and then Jamie Starkey.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I do have personal experience with a short-term rental in my neighborhood. I also live in Mary Point. In the thirty-four years I've lived in my house, I've never heard gunshots on my street until January of this year. Forty-five rounds were fired into the short-term rental home and into a nearby car due to renters having a party that became violent. This put all of our neighbors at risk for injury. Not only has a violent incident occurred at the short-term rental, but the trash and recycling containers were not put out for pickup for seven weeks recently, even after a complaint was filed with 311 after four weeks of the trash and recycling sitting there. The overflowing trash can had trash bags around it on the ground as well, and it was noticeable because the cans are stored near the driveway, so it's in plain sight. I support the city's policy that requires homeowners to live in their short-term rental home for one hundred eighty-five days of the year. This helps to ensure that the homeowner has a personal interest in maintaining the property, the safety of those who rent it, as well as the safety of neighbors, and promotes the possibility of the owner becoming part of the neighborhood community. The owner of a short-term rental in my neighborhood lives in Virginia Beach. I know this for a fact. He has never resided in the house for any length of time since he purchased it. He has violated the short-term rental agreement at least ten times. He's not stopped renting the house on a short-term basis. So I am frustrated that any penalties levied to this homeowner haven't yet persuaded him to discontinue his short-term rental. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And Jamie Starkey?
Good evening. My name is Jamie Starkey and I live in Mary Point. In fact, I'm the chairperson of our civic association, the Mary Point Civic Association. So I know we've addressed, and you said you are going to be addressing these in the next few days. And, but I just felt, since I am a representative, that I needed to get up and at least and say, that's all we're asking, is that these, these laws, these rules be enforced. I found out this afternoon that this person at One Langhorne has now put in a request for a long-term rental. But we've heard this before and it has yet been long-term. It is still a short-term and we are still very, very concerned about this address at least. So we just hope that you do follow through with what you say you're going to do about enforcing. And if you do, we hope not to have another incident like we did in January. Thank you very much.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll go to new business. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, this is just a quick personal note from me. You know, several weeks ago now, I returned to the office after leave and bereavement leave for the passing of my father. And I just wanted to thank this council, thank the staff and so many people, so many friends and associates in the community that I've worked with over the years who, who supported me at a very challenging time. And for that, I just want to say thank you very much.
Thanks, Alan. We love you. City Attorney?
I have nothing, sir, but I've got three new business items we're going to pass out to Councilman.
Okay. Should I pause and wait for you or keep going? Okay, City Clerk?
Nothing, sir.
Councilman Coleman?
Yes, sir. Just a couple of things. First of all, I wanted to congratulate Michael Poblasky, our Director of Parks and Rec, and also Cleeter Jones, who was Director of our Communications Department. I just want to say congratulations to them on their retirement. They had a combined ninety-eight years of service to this community, nearly a hundred years. And they definitely deserve, number one, their rest, but number two, our admiration. They've been tremendous community servants. And, and I know there's some big shoes to fill here, but we wish them the very best. Also, would like to give our, give my condolences to Reed Fowler's family. I know that it's been a while now since Reed had passed away and I apologize I didn't bring it up at the last council meeting, but Reed was our Director of Public Works here in the City of Newport News. He's with us thirty-plus years. He passed away about a month or so ago, but another tremendous public servant and we appreciate his service and our sincere condolences go out to him and, I mean, to his family. And last but not least, I want to congratulate all of the graduates from last weekend. Was able to go to a couple of the graduations. Just tremendously impressed with our young people and looking forward to some great things happening with them, whatever their next may be. But hopefully, after they go out into the world and do what they're going to do, they come back to Newport News and find their home here and start their lives, start their families, start their careers. And, but once again, congratulations to the graduates. And I also want to give a sincere thank you to all of our teachers and administrative staff that helped them along the way and their parents as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to Councilman Vic, I'm going to read three ordinances. I have infraction. The first ordinance, ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to execute and the city clerk to attest on behalf of the City of Newport News, Virginia, that certain addendum number two dated the tenth of June twenty twenty-five to the agreement between the City of Newport News, Virginia, and Alan K. Archer, City Manager. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Dick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carried, six zero.
Thank you. Next will be an ordinance authorizing and directing the City Manager to execute and the city clerk to attest on behalf of the City of Newport News, Virginia, that certain addendum number two dated the tenth day of June of this year to the agreement between the City of Newport News, Virginia, and Robert E. Pilow, City Attorney. I move to adopt an ordinance authorizing the execution of addendum number twenty to the employment contract of the city attorney. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. At this time, call the roll.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Dick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carried, six zero.
Thank you. And finally, an ordinance authorizing and directing the City Manager to execute and the Chief Deputy City Clerk to attest on behalf of the City of Newport News, Virginia, that certain addendum number twenty dated the tenth day of June this year to the agreement between the City of Newport News, Virginia, and Mabel Washington Jenkins, formerly known as Mabel v. Washington, City Clerk. I move to adopt an ordinance authorizing the execution of addendum to the employment contract of the city clerk. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. At this time, please call the roll.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Dick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carried, six zero.
Thank you. We'll now return to Councilman Vic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to the, all of the citizens who came to speak in reference to that shooting and what happened in your neighborhood, I, I hear you, but most of all, I share your concern. And I definitely want to be a part of being able to do whatever I can and to be able to help eliminate these situations. So thank you all for coming and at least allowing us to hear what your personal stories and what, what, what you've been through. So thank you for that. You're welcome. And I also have to say, this week has been a great week. The past couple of weeks, of course, with all the graduates, like Councilman Coleman said, with all of the graduations and just being able to see so many of our young people really serious about their lives and they're the betterment of this neighborhood and our city. And it was so great to be able to be out in the community. I didn't get to make any of the graduations, but to just be out in the community and to hear the excitement of what they experienced in our schools and to talk to so many teachers and other administrators as to how we are working hard in, in our city to educate our young people and to get them moving in, in the right direction. Also, I had the opportunity to cut the ribbon, cut the ribbon at our legacy landing in downtown Newport News on Sixteenth and Jefferson. And so to be able to see so many citizens get and obtain affordable housing in an absolutely new atmosphere that was very enlightening on, on last week to be able to cut the ribbon and to actually see how those new apartments have brightened that entire intersection. Also, next door to that, we were able to open our childcare center. And that was also such an enormous day to be able to see the young people coming in the building, to be able to greet them and to know that we have a facility, a first-class facility for childcare in our community because, as most of you know, that is what keeps a lot of families from being able to work because they can't find affordable and, and good childcare. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
No worries.
Oh, wait, should I say this now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I do want to say this as it relates to Waterworks. I have to read this because this is such a great honor. And to have this with our Waterworks in Newport News, I proudly want to read this. Newport News Waterworks has received two gold awards from the Virginia Department of Health, one for Harwitz Mill and one for Lee Hall Water Treatment Plant. The awards recognize water treatment facilities that meet rigorous performance standards in filtration, clarification, and backwash, ensuring the highest level of water quality. Only four plants in Hampton Roads region received awards this year. And Newport News Waterworks earned two of the three gold designations. This is the second year in a row both plants have earned gold, clear evidence of our commitment to delivering clean, safe, and reliable drinking water to more than four hundred and ten thousand customers across the peninsula. Congratulations to our production division operations staff for this outstanding achievement and for protecting public health every single day. It's been such an honor. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Harris?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Jones. And I also would like to thank everyone who came out on tonight to share your, your feet, your information and providing us with all the feedback in regards to what you may be experiencing. That helps us to maneuver in a way that's going to be able to continue to empower our communities in a, in a great way. So thank you for sharing that with us on tonight. I want to also to kind of echo my colleague, Councilman Coleman. I want to say congratulations to Ms. Cleeter Jones and Mr. Mike Popolowski for your retirement and all the great work that you have put in for this city for so many years. And I just am appreciative for how I've been close with Parks and Rec since my tenure on council. And anytime I get in front of a camera or make a video, Ms. Cleeter always made sure I looked and sounded good. So I really appreciate her for all that she has done. And then I also want to congratulate all of the graduates and not just our high school graduates, those that are promoting from, got to do it, because there's several of them, kindergarten to first grade, from fifth grade to sixth grade.
of them, kindergarten to first grade, from fifth grade to sixth grade, and middle school to high school. I had opportunities to attend several of those ceremonies, and it's always an exciting time to see all of those young people and their families celebrating another educational milestone. And so congratulations to all students, all staff, staff members here in the City of Newport News for a great school year. And then I want to acknowledge the passing of my coach, my high school football coach, Tommy Raymond. We celebrated his life this past weekend, Sunday. A great, great man. I would not be in the position that I'm in today if it had not been for his prophetic leadership, in which he guided us, young men, so many young men, not just here in Newport News, but across the region, in making sure that he captured the greatness out of each and every one of us. And we had a great time celebrating his life. I want to extend my condolences to his family, to his son, Tommy Raymond Jr., who I've known since he was a little kid, and just to continue to see him walk in the footsteps of his father and the legacy that he left, and doing all he can to uplift our community in his own special way. So I want to just acknowledge him on tonight for the legacy, the life of Coach Tommy Raymond. And that's all I have, Mayor Jones. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Long?
I also want to congratulate Cletus Jones and Mike Poblowski on their retirement. I didn't realize 98 years of service to the community, so we're much better for it. So enjoy your retirement. Also, congratulations to all the high school graduates. Look forward to hearing about all the great things that you'll be doing in your life, in your career in college, and hopefully you'll come back here, as I did after college, and continue to put into Newport News as Newport News is putting into you. And then lastly, I want to just wish the men, fathers, Happy Father's Day. Hopefully, you take the day, enjoy yourself. And this to fathers that either have children by blood, or have been mentoring a young boy or girl throughout their life. So just Happy Father's Day to you, to you men out there. And I also just want to give a Happy Father's Day to our newly Vice Mayor Bethany, for your first Father's Day as well.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you for that. But also, I want to thank all of you for coming out tonight. I too want to say that Mr. Reiman, his funeral was amazing, and I think all of the speakers did a phenomenal job, including Councilman Marcellus Harris. You can tell that his impact was felt, not just in Newport News, but across the country. And so extremely grateful to be there to watch such a magnificent celebration of life. And next, I'd like to also say welcome to the NNPS alumni family, to all the graduates. Graduation last year, I was able to go to all of them. Unfortunately, this year, I was not able to go to any, but that does not mean that my love was not there. So congratulations to all of the students. And then lastly, I will mention that the primary election is coming up on June 17th. So I encourage everyone to get out, fulfill your civic duty, do your homework on the candidates, and let your voice be heard. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I think all of council has taken my notes that I was going to say, so I'll just say, stand adjourned. Thank you.